Good evening, board members and residents. I'd like to call to order our regular board meeting for Monday, May 23rd, 2022, and I'd ask that everyone present please rise for the Bledge Allegiance.
Bledge Allegiance.
To the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll let everyone know that we had some audiovisual difficulties, so we're recording our meeting using a different format. But fortunately, our audiovisual folks were able to shift gears and keep us online. Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Backens here, Mr. Brado here, Mr. Olgiati here, Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Tominallo.
Here.
Mr. Witt here, Mr. Burkess.
Here, thank you. Next is our approval of our consent agenda, including approval of the regular board meeting minutes from May 9th, 2022, approval of the bills in the amount of $2,5850 and 80 cents, and approval of the April 2022 revenue and expenditure report. We'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Backens with support by Mr. Brado. Discussion, board members. Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Board members, we do have three proposed additions to our agenda. As we discussed during the, prior to the meeting. Item F2 would be $8,000 in emergency spending for sewer lining. Items H6 would be discussion for matching grant, potentially matching grant funds. And item H7 would be approval of the sale of 39990 West Offshore. If there's no discussion, I'd be, if there's a willingness, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda with those three additions.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mrs. Rose. Discussion, board. Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is announcements. First, an announcement that our offices will be closed next Monday in observation of Memorial Day. Our Harrison Township Library is hosting a special officer from the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. A K-9 unit will be on site to help teach about the Police DOB program, July 15th at 1:00 p.m. There will also be demonstrations to show what these special officers can do. The Harrison Township Fire Department is also coming to the library. Mark your calendars for August 12th for a fun storytime and some demonstrations by our firefighters. A fire truck will be on site to allow children to explore the fire truck after the demonstrations. These are just a couple of things coming up at our library, so we encourage everyone to visit the library's website at htlibrary.org. Call them, (586) 329-1261, or email them at librarian@htlibrary.org, or just visit the library to learn about more events coming up. Our treasurer's office is excited to announce the launch of a new billing and payment portal for tax and water and sewer payments. This portal offers a free payment option, which can draft funds from your checking or savings account. You can use this free payment method for transactions via the new portal on our website or by phone. The implementation date for the new payment portal was today, May 23rd. You can look for additional information and communications coming from our treasurer's office over the next few weeks, or you can visit the treasurer's page on our website for additional information. Our Parks and Rec Committee is hosting the 17th Annual Kids Fishing Derby coming up June 11th from 8:00 until 11:00 a.m. We encourage everyone to bring their own fishing equipment. Children up to age 16 are welcome to participate. Must be accompanied by an adult. There should be prizes and lots of fun things going on. I think some food and snacks and a good time. So we encourage folks to register. You can register on our website at www.harrison-t township.org. The Harrison Township Senior Center is taking a trip to the Detroit Zoo coming up June 1st. They're also hosting a monthly casino trip on the last Friday of every month. Space is limited for these trips, so please call ahead for details and to register. The Senior Center is hosting a senior safety workshop presented by the Prosecutor's Office this Thursday, May 26th at 9:30 a.m. They will focus on how to avoid criminals that target the senior population. Our Senior Center also features chair yoga on Tuesdays and Fridays at 1:00 p.m. for seniors to increase their strength and flexibility, as well as an aerobics strength class on Mondays at 1:00 p.m. The Senior Center hosts Bingo every Wednesday at noon and Uker every Thursday at noon. For more information on these events, you can call our coordinator, Jen, (586) 466-1497. And as always, for more information on these, as well as all other township events, you can call the supervisor's office, (586) 466-1445. Visit our website, www.harrison-t township.org, or follow us on Twitter at Harrison, T W P M I. Any other announcements? I know we had a road rally, is there a report on that?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Ted and Karen Vanderputten, who are Harrison Township residents. They were the ones that put this all together, many, many hours of laying out the clues, et cetera. We had about 115 people in attendance. It was a sellout of 25 carloads. Great time was had by all, the weather held up, and then we ended up at Cranks up on, by the golf course on Masonic. So just a great evening and thanks to all the residents that came on out.
Good, thank you. Thanks for the effort in putting that together.
Of course.
Any other announcements?
Just one, Mr. Supervisor. So today was the launch of our new payment portal. And by the time we left the office, we had 147 residents that signed up for the new portal, so moving along great. We had about 20 come into the office today with assistance in setting up reoccurring payments. So working our way along.
Yes.
Awesome.
And then for anyone who might want to set up recurring payments, but might not be comfortable just doing that on their own, what are their options?
Yeah, so for this week and next week, 8 o'clock to 4:00 p.m., no appointment is necessary. You can come on into the treasurer's office. We're set up to help you set up your reoccurring payments, what used to be known as ACH. And for those of you who can knock it out and need this service performed as well, we do have some forms you can fill out. We can do it remotely for you over the phone. So contact the treasurer's office, (586) 466-1440. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other announcements?
I just wanted to mention the applications for absentee ballots for the August and November elections will be going out within the next two weeks. So look in your mailbox for that. If you're signed up, you can receive those already. If you want one and you don't receive it, you can contact the clerk's office.
And these would be to request?
To request a ballot for the August.
Again, it looks like the baseball fans are coming along.
They are, yeah.
They're looking good.
They're finally completed the fence work.
Looking real nice.
Yeah, they're really nice.
Look great. Okay, all right. If there's nothing else, next on our agenda, item D1 regarding special assessments.
So before us tonight, board, we have Resolution Number 5 for the Benet Shore Special Assessment District. This is based on the petitions we received from the Benet Shore subdivision. Our board formed a Special Assessment District, or SAD, to fund the repaving of Windmill, Clearpoint, and a portion of San Juan. This project was also included as part of the Macomb County Subdivision Reconstruction Program, which will cover $500,000 of the SAD costs. The county recently received bids for the work. We prepared all those estimated costs, sent it over to our bond counsel and financial advisor for the preparation of Resolution Number 5, which we have tonight, which confirms the role or how the SAD costs are split. For this project, it's an equal cost across all 138 lots, so the cost is final cost divided by 138. And adopts the terms by which the township treasurer shall collect the SAD from the residents. One difference from SADs in the past is that because there is a bond associated with this, the prepayment opportunity must take place in advance of the bond sales, so we don't overfinance the project. Because once we borrow the money, it doesn't matter what the project comes in, and we have to pay it back. Right? So we're going to give people opportunity to avoid that interest and pay that within the next 30 days through the treasurer's office without incurring any interest charges. We do have Mr. Axe, our bond counsel, here if there are any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend adoption of the Resolution Number 5 as proposed. And I just, one thing, I did have one question about the interest rate. The interest rate is basically, that's in the resolution, is a not to exceed, and it would be reflective based on what bond sales actually are.
So not to exceed 5?
Correct.
And if it comes in at 3.12, that's what the interest rate will be? Gotcha. All right, make that motion or a motion? All right. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 5 by Mr. Tominallo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Brado?
Mr. Backens.
Damn, I'm telling you, you guys, you guys need it. I can never tell. Yeah. Or switch it around or something. Okay, good. Motion by Mr. Tominallo, support by Mr. Backens to adopt Resolution Number 5. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Tominallo?
Yes.
Mr. Backens?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Witt? Yes. Mr. Burkess?
Yes. Next on our agenda is item D2, which is also related to the same issue.
Yes. So in order for us to issue bonds to finance Benet Shore's Special Assessment District paving project, the board must adopt the bond resolution attached as prepared by our bond counsel from Clark Hill. This resolution is very similar to the one that we adopted during our last bond issuance. And I'm only going to say it's not identical because I didn't go that level of detail, but like, the main points are the same. But it does allow us, it allows us to work with our financial advisor to secure the best financing for the project, whether it's a public sale or a direct sale. That's something our treasurer's office and our finance department will work with them to figure out and, you know, try and get the best bang for our buck there. I would recommend adoption of the bond resolution for the Benet Shore's SAD as presented.
Any discussion, or is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So moved. All right, motion by Mr. Tominallo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Rose. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Tominallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Backens?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Witt? Yes. Mr. Burkess?
Yes. Thank you, board.
Thank you, board.
Next on our agenda is item E1, which is really far down here from the Fire Department regarding the hiring of some firefighter paramedics. We have Chief Bastader here. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. So we're here tonight to request hiring two probationary firefighters. My phones aren't working.
Oh.
Yeah, just speak out. Yeah, so can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Good.
So, very good, so.
Use your outdoor voice.
We're, all right. So we're here to hire two probationary firefighters. We have one retirement that will happen on May 28th, Battalion Chief Mark Hoskin, after 32 years of service. And so we have one candidate who has already been through the oral board interview process and seeking your approval tonight to move forward to be able to do the background investigation, psychological evaluation, and the physical exam. The second firefighter that we're seeking actually will put us one above what our normal staffing is, but that's because we have an expected retirement in the second half of this year. The reason why we want to hire this individual, he comes highly recommended. He's just beginning the application process. In our industry, as in many industries right now, it's very difficult to hire quality individuals. It's really slim pickings out there. It's very competitive. And this is an individual that we could hire that will stay with Harrison Township Fire Department, which is really important to us. A lot of times, you'll have a lot of shopping that happens, and you have individuals from other fire departments that are sought out by other departments, and they will sometimes jump ship. And we're looking for people to come to Harrison Township Fire Department and become part of our family and stay here for 25-plus years of service. So we've been really successful in that, in that regard. And we really, like I said, we don't want to miss out on this opportunity, so that's why we're asking you to go one ahead. The expected retirement that we have is from a very credible source, and we know that it's going to happen. It's looming. We don't have the exact date yet, but we don't want to miss out on this opportunity.
Make a motion to authorize the offer of appointment for two candidates for positions at probationary firefighter, paramedic, subject to a one-year probationary period.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Olgiati?
I mean, I would, like, I normally wouldn't say, like, add an extra guy without knowing the date, but like, the horror stories I've heard from some of my peers, you know, like, one of them did a national search for three vacancies and got nobody. So.
There's also, maybe not an economy of scale, but there's some efficiency if you can bring people in and train them at the same time. And also, even if we bring someone on today, by the time they've gone through the training necessary to count towards staffing, there's, I don't know, maybe I wouldn't say a time lost, but we don't hire a firefighter on June 1st and count them towards staffing on June 2nd. Takes some time for them to learn the procedure, so it's good to be ahead of the curve.
The first firefighter would have a start date of June 20th if he passes everything else. And the second one still has one more step that he has to go through. So he probably, at the earliest, would be a July, early August hiring anyways. So we're really talking about a matter of like, three months. And, you know, during the summertime, it actually kind of helps out with our staffing to have the additional person anyways. They come with, both come with experience. They aren't pretty. One has been a paramedic for eight years out in the field and has been a supervisor, and so has a lot of skills there. And then we're going to get him up to speed on his firefighting skills. Has all the certifications and everything, though.
All right. Good. Any discussion, board members?
No discussion, but just a question. I know, Chief, about maybe three months ago, we were talking about adding firefighters so that we can balance out the crews in case of vacations and illness and things along that line. Is this fitting into what we had talked about before? Is this a totally separate issue?
It's, it's separate.
Okay.
It's separate. We could use additional staffing that would require an increase in the fire mileage. We're not prepared to do that right now. And so it's something that at some point, we're going to have to address it, but that isn't right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Olgiati to extend the offer of employment to two candidates for the Fire Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is item F1 from the Water and Sewer Department regarding Engineering Services. Mr. Axe Dallas here from our Water and Sewer Department.
Good evening, board members. So I've spoken to you many times in the past regarding our, the water tank and the meter pits needing some updated work, updating and work to them in order to operate efficiently and correctly. On April 27th, Supervisor Burkess, the clerk with myself, Justin, Jeff from my team and myself, we met with GLWA regarding our contract negotiations. And I'm going to try to keep this as short and sweet as possible, and I know I'm going to get off a little bit. But part of those negotiations were that we have now been given a deadline to complete this work. And what this work consists of is, we have HR1 is our main meter pit over by the water tank, and it has a 16-inch PRV valve in it, which is decades old. And when I say decades, I'm saying 40 to 50 years old. And it is way oversized and not operating properly or efficiently. It's very slow to react, and so what that does is the slightest reaction alters the pressure and flows greatly, causing us great problems. We've, this has caused us some exceedances with our contract with GLWA, and that is the main purpose of attempting to do this work and get our contract numbers lower so that our water costs are lower for our residents. So what I'm asking you for this evening is, I know that you received a document from Mr. Nummer, and I apologize, there wasn't updated version. You actually received what was a pretty rough draft. But basically, the information is correct. Mr. Nummer has given us a number of $10,000 to oversee engineering at my discretion, mine and my team's discretion, as to what we need him to do. I spoke to him again today, and we do not believe that we will come near this figure, but we don't want to undershoot, just as the previous conversation was, so that we have to come back. So what I'm asking for is the approval for Mr. Nummer's engineering, and then I'm meeting in June 3rd with the rest of the team, Kennedy Industries, our sole valve provider, Skata blocks, our Skata provider, which you've approved the contract with, ICS Integration Services, all of the team members I need to make this work. A year, we have one year to do this, basically, until May 1st, 2023. And that sounds like a lot of time, but in, with the way things are today, it's not nearly enough time. So what I'm asking is the approval of this engineering, and then also for the approval to come back to at a later date with the numbers and costs for the actual equipment and products that we will need to do this. But I need to be able to give these vendors a go when I meet with them to say yes, because they are our sole providers, our sole service providers and product suppliers. They've supplied every valve and pump for our sanitary meter pits. They supplied the entire Skata system. You recently approved for me to have the directional boring done for the conduits to be put in from the meter pit to the tank, so that's there waiting for this work that I anticipated and discussed with you at that time. So that's the long and short of it. I need to be able to make this work in a very timely fashion, because what's going to happen is, if it's, if we get this, we will get this in and operational by May 1st of 2023. We begin the peak season, June 1st of 2023, through August 31st, and we have to get through that entire season with the new equipment without an exceedance, and then we get to open up our contract again with GLWA to renegotiate numbers, which we can then actually lower, which in turn will lower our water rates. So this is all hinging on, obviously, everybody coming together, doing their job, and then hopefully getting Harrison Township lower water rates than we currently have.
So Dave, this is, you know, like a traditional design. It's sort of, that's sort of saying design is sort of a, it's more so approving time with Mr. Nummer and his firm to help us integrate all these different partners because they're our engineer. We don't pay an engineer, but, and normally, we might say like, yeah, for an hour or two, Dave just sends us a bill and we pay it. But this is a known large quantity of time, and then you're asking for his approval of that, for our approval of that time.
Correct, so, and absolutely. So what will happen is Kennedy Industries, we've already worked with them, and I've, you know, Singer, we want to go with Singer PRV valves. Right now, we have clay valve. We've had issues with their service provider. Dave is intimate with Kennedy Industries from his work with us and other communities that he works as an engineer for. So is Skata blocks and ICS Integration Services. They've used Singer PRV valves and controls. And so, but I rely on Dave to say, yep, this has been done here, this is the proper size. Dave does those calculations. We know how we want it to work, how it needs to work intimately with our hands. He has to put the numbers on paper and give them to the suppliers and builders to say, this is the proper size, this is the flow, this is this port, that port, to cover us. And so, yes, it would be strictly at my, not, not back and call, but it would be at my discretion is to say when we need Mr. Nummer's advice and information on this project. And there will be a lot that is dealing with Kennedy. Once they, once they bid the project, those numbers will come to you. Integration Services, the same thing. That most likely will become an hourly thing, as will Skata blocks for the additional, because you can't simply say, well, it's going to take me an hour to pull the wire from the pit to the tank, and then you run into an issue. Those things could be a little bit different. So it is a unique project, to say the less, but it is a long time in the making, and it's long overdue. And we're excited and need to get this done. I know that you were in the meeting, and Supervisor Burkess was in the meeting, and there are no more second chances or do-overs or alterations to our contract with GLWA. This work has to be done, or we are going to see some severe consequences.
Yeah, so this is really an effort to do a couple of things. We know some of the engineering that's going to, or some of the work that's going to come from this is going to be paid for by GLWA. Some of the, some of the work that will come from this engineering is going to be a cost that we're going to absorb. But again, the overall goal of this is to maintain lower water rates with GLWA. So getting that tank operating as efficiently as possible ultimately leads to lower costs. So the, you know, I hate to say no-brainer, obviously, you know, you need to, sometimes you need to spend some money to make improvements, but the improvements that this engineering work will lead to will be, you know, six figures over a period of time, not five figures. I mean, so it is definitely something we need to do, and something in a prior agreement we've already committed to doing when we said we'll agree for some altered pressures during the reconstruction of the, of the main versus in exchange for getting the PRV upgraded at GLWA's cost.
So again, I said that this could be a long-winded conversation, or I tried to keep it shorter. And I mean, I could elaborate on that a little bit so that maybe the board members understand. You recently, we had recently discussed the relocation of the 96-inch water main for GLWA through the landfill. What we negotiated with them is the fact that for that project to take place for them, and in order to keep our contract pressures currently with GLWA, they are installing a booster pump station in the Chesterfield corridor. And, but in order for our pressures to stay to the exact numbers we're at, they would have had to install another one at a cost of $8 to $9 million in my industrial corridor. By agreeing, by us agreeing that we can live with a slight fluctuation in pressures, they do not have to spend that $8 to $9 million. So they're going to spend tens of thousands of dollars, and maybe, you know, in the excess of $100,000, to help us renovate our system with the PRV. Now, that's the PRV for HR1, but I also am looking to replace the PRVs at HR2 because, as I, as the document stated, everything was clay valve, and they used to be a very reputable company with great service when Kennedy Industries was their service provider. They've changed. We are having nothing but issues. Jeff and Justin are ready to pull their hair out. And so we will change them all and have the same brand name, the same service provider, and the same parts manufacturer and timeframes for everything. So it's a multi-step project that is going to, we will take the year to do it, but that's why I'm, I need the assurance that I have your blessing to do this and the blessing to get timeframes moving as I've come to you and saying I need to order meters and clamps and things ahead of time, only because of lead times. The lead times for some of these pumps used to be six to eight weeks. Now, they can be easily 16 to 24 weeks for pumps, and that has nothing to do with the controls. I mean, so, and obviously, that gets into chip factors and everything else that is affecting our nation and worldwide. So like I said, I'm getting repetitive, but I obviously need your blessing to make this happen and happen in a timely manner.
Any discussion, or is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposal from Mike Trim for Design Engineering Services to upgrade the PRV at HR1 and HR2 water meter pits, and also upgrade the metering controls for the water storage tank in HR1 and HR2 at a cost not to exceed $10,000.
All right, is there support?
Support.
A motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mrs. Rose. We had heard some information already. Are there questions or any discussion?
I guess my comment is, this is a big undertaking for 11 months. With controls, materials. And you mentioned, I think, Dave, your words were, we don't get another, by the, you said, we don't get another opportunity to be successful with this. Or we'll see, you didn't say repercussions, but there'll be some fallout. I guess my question would be, what else? Is there anything else that we can? Is there anything else that we can do right now to make sure to have a redundant plan? Because I just see this timing of one component being a problem for us. And, and I know you've got your head around it more than I do and I know that our suppliers do the best they can. But what you just described and what I've read here, this is a big job for all of us to be successful. You almost have to hit triples every time you come up to bat. So is there anything else that?
I hit home runs, just so you know.
Okay.
So just so you're aware, Brian, this, as I've mentioned to you folks, I, that's why when I make these subtle statements to you as my board members, that things are coming, I've been working on this. My team and myself have been working on this. Justin and Jeff, myself, Dave Neumer, Keith Sakitis from Kennedy, Mike Bach from Skata Blocks and Mike Wagner from ICS. I've already met with these gentlemen many times. I've had prices on some of this equipment, but then as we know, things change drastically here throughout the nation and the world. So numbers have changed and, and leads have changed. But I, just in my conversations with them, they assure me that this can happen. I'm confident it can happen. Um, and so, and let me, I guess I'll eat my words a little bit. I, and Mr. Verkess and Mr. Witt can attest to this. It's not that there'll be dire consequences. It's, we, we negotiate a contract with GLWA every year for our water rates and every year we attempt to get those numbers lowered so that we get a better rate. Um, if this does not happen, what will happen is one number is going to stay the same. One number's going to go up slightly and then we have, then we will have to work harder to get that number back down. If we complete this and get through our year test, our peak year, and our numbers are successful without exceedance, then we have the right to ask for, um, an opener earlier than most other communities would get that and we may be able to drop our numbers sooner. So that's, I, that was sort of a, I guess, a misspoken statement, but with a lot of accuracies, I guess, let's say.
I just, uh, I know what you got going on the next eleven months. It's gonna be a.
It is going to be challenging and I, like I said, it is going to take a complete team effort, but we do have a great team, um, Justin and Jeff. I mean, I can't say enough about their understanding of this and their operation of this. Um, my hat goes off to them every time. Um, but this, this is something I've been working on with Dave and the other team members for some time now to get, to get the, this ball rolling.
Okay. And, and I, I guess, I, I think when we take part in some of these discussions and negotiations, negotiations with GLWA, I'm wearing a little bit of the hat that you're wearing to say like, okay, from a five thousand foot level, is there something else we should be doing parallel to this? And I, I kind of feel like the short answer is no. I, we, this is, this is the result of, uh, not only a lot of work by Dave and the folks on his team, but also negotiations with GLWA and getting, getting to this point. Um, simply stated, this is the next step. This is the right way forward. Uh, and, you know, while there, while there could be challenges along the way, it, it is certainly reasonable for us to think that working with his team, we can get those controls up to the next level and just further reduce. Really what this comes down to is filling the tank in the middle of the night is not a challenge. Drawing from the tank during the day is what's difficult, because we really don't know at five AM on any given day how hot it's going to be and how many people happen to be at their boats and how many people decide to water their garden at any given time and how many people are home versus on vacation. So if we draw from Detroit's or from the Great Lakes Water Authority too much at any given time, we can be penalized because we agree to only draw a certain amount. We, we, we want to make sure that our controls are optimized, that, that pressure reducing valve reacts i- 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 at the proper time. And a part of this is we're using the right, the most current data from the meter pit that Great Lakes Water Authority has. Well, all, our meter pits have their, their, uh, equipment and our equipment. And I can read what's going through my meter, but if their meter says something different, they don't really care what my, our, my meter says. They only care what their meter says. So part of this is using their data so that we don't have a lag or any difference in the data. A lot of different things like that. Uh, but this is the right way forward and I don't think there is something redundant that we need to do. This will result in some redundancy.
Okay.
And just one question. Is there anything, Mr. Axel, that you're going to do on, on this project that's gonna jeopardize the ability for us to utilize the tank to the full capabilities of utilizing it? Cause it's, I know it's such an, it's such an asset for the, for the members of the community in regards to, you know, lowering their water costs and things along that line. Is there anything that you can see with everything that's on this? Cause you just said it's a massive job. And if something were to happen to that water tank, are we still gonna be able to supply our residents with the amount of water they need to run or through daily lotters and the activities?
Absolutely. So it's sort of a, um, multi-stage question, but, um, I'll, I'll answer it like this. If the water tank were out of commission tomorrow morning, the residents would not miss a beat as far as the water that they get. We would end up paying a little bit more over the length of time that the tank is down. Um, because we now have both meter pits, HR one and HR two. So we can get water from each feed, open the valves further for more volume and control pressures. So the, as far as the residents having water, that's not an issue. Um, the other, um, answer to that is the peak season, as I mentioned, is May first through August thirty-first. That's the big, big deal for us, um, peak season. So if we have an exceedance at that time, that's what gives us a ding and, and, you know, penalizes us. If any other time, it doesn't matter. Um, so what will happen is we will operate through this peak season of two thousand twenty-two before we ever touch any control or anything in there. There will be a lot of legwork that we can do. We can get wires pulled through those conduits that you approved for me. We can get the PRVs, um, in place and get, um, the, the, um, pieces measured and all of the equipment there and everything ready to go. And then once D-Day hits, it's teardown. And we're ready to roll. And that's exactly what I'm looking to do is I need to get all of my ducts in a row, all of their ducts in a row, and I need that assembly line to move when the day hits.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, uh, discussion, questions about the, uh, engineering and the upgrades to our meter pits and storage tank? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mrs. Rose to approve the, uh, engineering. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much, Board.
Next on our agenda is item F two. As you might recall, we added item F two. Uh, this is kind of an emergency addendum regarding some sewer lining. Uh, Mr. Axel?
Um, Board members, I, some of you may be aware, I was actually on vacation last week, but I was made aware, um, we did have a contractor, um, the Macomb County Department of Roads is replacing an under-road bulb that connects two canals. And the contractor doing the work for them accidentally damaged our sanitary sewer. Um, they dug and hit our sewer and pulled it out, um, causing an open pipe situation and causing, um, canal water to enter our system along with a lot of debris, sand, um, silt materials. Um, and that it ended up, um, actually backfeeding, surplusing the system, uh, against the, the grate and ended up putting water into people, a few people's basements, five people's basements. And it also took a lot of, um, water and sandy, silty material into our system downstream to our Bay Haven Station and locked up the pumps, which caused them to stop. And so, um, we had to put test balls, Ju- Justin, the team, put test balls in, blocking the system up for the contractor, um, working with them as a team and, um, the, the pipe was dug up, um, repaired, televised. And what, where we're at tonight is there's still some more work to do, some, possibly some more sewer main cleaning. But when they were televising the repair, they noticed, um, that there was some, an additional infiltration connected to the pipe that they caught and pulled out of the ground, meaning that we have that coming into our system. And then they also noticed one beyond the repair that would not have anything to do with their error. And, um, this was part of our Saw grant and the information that we have cameraed that I keep saying we are working on and getting numbers together. Um, so what we're looking to do is this contractor is willing to bring a subcontractor in to put, um, repair bands in. And so if you picture, I, you know, you hear me talk about water breaks all the time and, um, water bait, water break, um, repair clamps. Um, a water main pipe, you take a water main clamp, you put it around there and depending on the size of clamp, there's a series of bolts, depending on how many, and you tighten that up and it just squeezes around the water main like a giant Band-Aid and stops the leak. Doesn't matter, you know, a hundred pounds pressure and it doesn't leak. What they're going to do with this is there's a couple of different versions. Um, I, we're going to investigate the method that they will use. Um, they're all AWWA approved, but, um, and what will happen is they're going to most likely put a stainless steel Band-Aid, so to speak, in there. And what'll happen is there's a material, a foam material that goes in and it's going to go in and it's gonna open up. Instead of clamping around the main, it's gonna go to the inside of the main perfectly around the pipe and, but that foam sealant is like, um, a, um, sorry, I'm, I'm having a blank, a grout that, um, it, because they, they use grout in exterior manholes where they literally just shoot it in with a straw and it fills a hole. Well, that's what they put in here and it's, it's, um, soluble, soft, but it, um, seals one hundred percent. And so they'll put that in there and then it seals it and then they'll televise and make sure the repair is correct. And they'll do that in the location where they caused the error and then they're going to do that in a location where they noticed an additional error. And the cost, um, was estimated at fifty-five hundred dollars per application. And so what I would like to do is ask you to, um, approve not to exceed eight thousand dollars just in case I run into something that I'm unaware of, because as we know, this wasn't our issue at hand. Um, but this is, again, the right thing to do at the right time. We have an opportunity to where the contractor's sort of paying for this to, you know, help alleviate the situation that they caused. And it's, you know, taking infiltration away from us that is infiltrating our system and saving us money. So that's sort of my explanation in a nutshell.
Yeah, sure. And, and this, this came up. I think they, they did some TV work in the sewers today. They saw this and so just this afternoon, uh, one of our field supervisors said, hey, they're looking to do this lining tomorrow. Um, the, the reality is, uh, we're, it's a very fluid situation. The contractor may say, hey, look, for the trouble that we caused, we'll absorb this cost. Uh, inversely, they could get in here and they might find, hey, you know, we found two places where we need this repair. So this is our best guess, but if the contractor that lines sewers is already present, they've already come out, it may cost us nothing, it may, maybe some cost, but clearly over the long hauls, getting rid of infiltration, you know, saves us a lot more than the cost that will incur in sewer costs going forward. So with that, is there a motion to approve up to eight thousand dollars in emergency spending to line sewers, uh, at Bay Haven?
So moved.
All right. Is there support?
Support.
All right. That sounded like Mr. Badkins. I didn't look. All right. We got a motion by Mr. Tommello with support by Mr. Badkins. Uh, any discussion, questions on the motion?
Right. I, my questions and comments are more, probably offline. I'll call you tomorrow. Real curious to know about all the damage that was done, the stuff that happened to the houses, the time that our guy spent putting the stops in the pipe. Is the contractor paying for all that?
I, so as I, I mentioned, Justin and I had to sit down this morning. Um, and as I mentioned, there is still a lot of work happening in the field. Um, so he is giving me detailed maintenance reports of my crew's time and efforts and what took place. I have already reached out to Macomb County Public Works to Vince Asturino and I'm getting meter reports to see, you know, how much of a, an increase in flow there may have been from what entered our system. Because not being there and just, you know, and, and obviously my crew, there was only really one person on site, if I'm not mistaken, because this was not our job.
Right.
Okay. And, uh, this error shouldn't have happened. I mean, but errors happen. And, um, so our, my opinion or our, my perception is that more water, um, entered my sanitary sewer system than entered out into the environment or the canals, like when I had to pump into Venetian. And so I am reaching out to, um, Eagle tomorrow, to my representatives and have a conversation with them regarding all of this. But the short answer to your question is I will have detailed numbers, times, information, employees and exactly what happened. I will have all of that information. Then there will be further discussion between myself, Jeff, Justin. And I know Justin had reached out to Supervisor Verkess while I was off. And so I, yes, I, in my opinion, yes, this should happen. And that's sort of exactly what Mr. Verkess was just saying is he's had conversation with them and they're, they're trying to, you know, right the wrong by saying, look, um, this is a bad situation and we're already here and we, you know, maybe we can help you out or work, you know, to make this, you know, better. Cause I can assure you folks, um, this was one of the number one, um, spots on the infiltration list for the Saw grant information that we have. This was one of the first, within the top five that we were going to hit. So, I mean, this is, you know, it, it is, um, is for, it's as good as a bad thing can become.
Well, well, I, and I guess it's two-part. For me, having a good backup contractor, right, that you can reach out to to make these repairs is important. So it's not like gold to run them off or say, let's, maybe we should look for someone else, right? Cause they've done thirty of them. They've had, I'm just guessing at the number.
Well, maybe a part of clarification. So the contractor that caused this problem is not the contractor that's gonna do the lining?
No. My point is, is to have that contractor.
And his connections.
Yes, and their connections when we need them. But the second part is, from a insurance standpoint, the contract standpoint, I want to know what they're on the hook for.
And they, and my understanding is verbally is that they are taking care of everything. They're making everything as whole as possible. They, there were residents that came and, and they did their own cleanup and said that they were okay. There were other ones that hired Jarvis to come in for the cleanup and, and this contractor is footing the bills for them. Um, I know that, um, they've, they had multiple vectoring truck companies out there cleaning our sanitary system, vectoring and hauling away, trying to get this, you know, resolved as quickly as possible.
Doing everything right.
I would, I would be, I would agree with that, yes.
Yeah. So they're doing everything right that we would ask, but I, let's say it's more catastrophic than that.
I understand.
From, from a contract that we've engaged them in, what is the ca- what is the capacity of that? You know, so heaven forbid it happened again and it floods out a thousand houses, right? I would just like maybe yourself or somebody to look at that contract to make sure that it is set up for that.
Right. So, well, clarification, they weren't doing work for us. They were doing work for Macomb County Department of Roads. So we, we had.
But they caused it, so we didn't write the contract.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. I totally misunderstood.
Well, what, what I would say maybe to, to Eve, to, to maybe to help you understand, number one, um, initially only one street was affected, but because the infiltration caused damage to the pumps, it caused greater damage. So initially, we got Jarvis out there and just said, please help clean this guy up and we'll worry about who pays for it later because we need to get this done as soon as possible. They were on scene the following morning and by that time other homes had damage. The contractor that was doing the work for Macomb County Department of Roads engaged with Jarvis and said, please also go take care of this home, this home and that home. So they, they foot that bill. I, I learned a little bit through the process, because initially I told the homeowner to reach out to their homeowner's insurance carrier. But the concern there was by making a claim on your own policy, even if it's somebody else's fault, it can impact your premium. So that's why we've tried to work directly with the contractor to get that work done. They've been very cooperative. But one of the vice, one of the VP of the company was out there, uh, not only working on site, but also working with the homeowners. And I think so, so the, the response to any resident who had damage at their home so far has been very positive from the contractor and, and very, very, um, accommodating, I guess is the term I would use. The result of what we might do between us and that contractor is a little bit more fluid and I think this is a part of it. So I think if they said, hey, you know what, we've already got this person out there. We know you incurred some costs, but we're gonna cover the cost of some additional linings, that might in the end cover more than what our costs are. But right now we just don't know all those details. So worst case, if this contractor is on site tomorrow and they can line the sewer and we haven't resolved that, I don't want to tell them to spend fifty-five hundred bucks and have this board say, wait a minute, we had a meeting Monday night. Why didn't you tell us about this? So really, we're just kind of asking in advance for permission to do this work. Makes sense. May cost us nothing. I mean, it may be an offset to other costs is probably a better way to say that.
No, it, it makes sense, but it also opens up. No, it, it makes sense, but it also opens up another question in my head is when you have somebody working for a third party, Macomb County Road Commission, they damage our equipment, what's liability? Off, I don't want to, we don't have to talk about that now. I'll follow up with you, Dave.
In my, as I said, um, Mr. Badkins, my understanding from speaking with Justin is the contractor has taken every step to do everything properly. Um, as far, number one, as far as the residents go and, and number two is our system. And then obviously, like you, I come in and, you know, Jeff and Justin and, and Mr. Verkess are thinking of some things and I automatically said, well, what about this, 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 and this? And those are things that are going to be discussed and addressed tomorrow. So I will have, you know, detailed reports, notes, and so on and so forth because it, it is, it's um a compound situation, to say the least.
All right, thank you.
Uh, any other discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing done and seeing no public comment, we've got a motion by Mr. Tommello with support by Mr. Badkins to approve up to eight thousand dollars in emergency spending for sewer lining uh at Bayhaven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on our agenda is item G1 from the Treasurer's Office regarding YouTube.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So I'd like to um, share with the Board that we have created a You, Harrison Township YouTube channel. Uh, the goal of the channel um is to have the Board of Trustees, Planning and zoning meetings streamed live on YouTube, on the YouTube channel along with um a lot of the other um videos that we film for Parks and Rec and other um, other subject matter. Um, so with that said, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce Mr. Patrick Glitterberry, who is our cable technician, our master cable technician. He's going to give us a little bit of background on the YouTube channel. Patrick?
You just said everything I wanted to say, so that was fantastic. Um, I'm just gonna do it for a year if that's okay. Uh, so the town, the channel is the Charter Township, okay, you want me over here?
We want to see a, a team.
This was supposed to be streamed live, by the way, but since we had a power issue, uh, that's not going to happen. So we'll move forward with that in our June meetings. Um, we have successfully configured our equipment in the control room to stream to YouTube. I've run a couple of tests, we've had live streams, I was able to capture them and keep and archive them. So moving forward, all meetings will be stri, streamed uh on cable television and YouTube simultaneously, we'll archive them on YouTube. They will be on playlists, so there will be a Board of Trustees playlist, a Planning Commission playlist, and a Zoning Board playlist. So as we add meetings, they will go chronologically. So if a resident clicks on the playlist, all the meetings will appear chronologically, starting with the newest, going back to the last. So the goal um for, before the end of the year is to have the meetings that we have already come out of there, put them on and archived. So we want to have the entire twenty twenty-two library of all meetings moving forward on our YouTube channel. If you subscribe to it, anytime that we do go live, you'll get a notification on your phone saying the Charter Township is live. They can watch it live on their phone, or you can turn off that annoying feature if you don't want your phone going off all the time. But uh, that is an option that we want our residents to know about, that they can subscribe to it. They'll, they'll automatically be notified unless you turn that feature off. But anytime we go live with Planning Commission, Zoning Board, or this board right here, you can uh watch it live on your phone or your tablet, your laptop, whatever you want to do. And again, this will make it easier for residents to go back and be able to review these things at their leisure moving forward.
Just a question, is there either a cost for this or a cost savings associated with this?
Zero.
Zero cost?
YouTube is free.
Okay. Is there something that we're spending money on now that we won't because we switched this?
No, um, Patrick, if you can speak about this, but I was going to ask you, and I, I know the answer, but I was going to ask you if, if our website is still going to have all the board meetings on that as well? Yes to grant?
We can say yes to two things. What we're currently doing now, we have two, we have several systems running right now. One is the clerking office, that's known as a Granicus, and that records and will uh put the agenda items and things of that nature to it. That is separate from what the cable television stick, with that room over here is doing and what this YouTube channel will be doing. So YouTube, I think, is more user-friendly, people are comfortable with it, they use it more often, it's on their phone. They may not actually go to the township website and go clicking through to go find a meeting. First, go on the website, go on Harrison Township, looking up, you know, this is just, I think will be easier access. It will not be marked with agenda items, there will not be any of that higher level functioning that we get from the Granicus system. Um, but like I said, people are used to YouTube and it's probably time we've been doing this.
So this is really just another parallel method available for the purposes of making it available for residents?
Correct.
For anybody?
Correct.
Okay, good.
You do not have to have a YouTube account to do this either.
Okay. All right, any questions or is there a motion to approve the use of a YouTube channel for streaming meetings?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support that motion.
All right, we got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Old Giotti. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Questions?
I think it's a fantastic tool for our community. I think more people know how to use YouTube than they know how to use Granicus and everything else and get involved in the, in the website. I think it's, I think I've kind of planned on.
Yeah, having said that, Granicus still gives us certain features and things that you can look up and see. So it's just a, it's just a parallel.
We can also certainly put a link to the YouTube channel on the web, on the front page of the website as well to get that easier to use and get some more eyeballs that way as well.
Excellent. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing done, we've got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Old Giotti. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Lomary.
Thank you.
Uh, next is item G2, uh, also from the Treasurer's Office regarding the investment policy.
Uh, thanks again, Board. So I, I want to submit two amendments to the current investment policy. The first, first one is from three point one point four. Um, what I wanted to change is I wanted to change the percentage of exposure of a single security issuer from fifteen percent to seventy-five expense, uh, seventy-five percent exposure. Um, this was something that was identified as we went through the audit. Uh, we haven't got the audit response and I'm not sure if this is going to be identified or not. But what this does is the way it was written initially, fifteen percent means that I, I would have to deal with up to ten different um, investment um, security uh in, institutions, which is a little much when you're dealing with it, with the, that many um, folks. Right now, I have our money spread across three um investment uh banks. We have uh Robinson Capital, we have Huntington, of course, we have um, uh, Chase. So um, by moving it to seventy-five, uh, seventy-five percent, it keeps me within that four. I'm looking to, to get one more, at least one more local bank, uh, which is um Flagstar. But this gives, puts a little bit better reality. So that's the first change I'm asking for. The second change is section nine point oh. Um, basically, I want, I would like to add the sentence, the investment portfolio value is based on the total amount of idle funds across all accounts. So basically what's happening is it says that no more than fifty percent of any account can be in one portfolio. So when the auditors looked at this, um, they looked at what we had invested in Robinson Capital, Huntington, and um, they weren't looking at our investments in uh Chase, although Chase, the accounts we hold in Chase, you know, everything, the majority of our stuff is in Chase. So I wanted to add that. So they're looking at not just the accounts and securities that are being invested, um, but they're looking at all accounts and all encompassing. So um, those are the two um, changes that I'm making, uh, that I'm looking to make and I can surely answer any questions. Or I can ask for a motion.
Are there any questions or discussion or is there a motion?
So I think that we read in here that you and the Deputy Treasurer, is it a joint decision or is strictly you make that decision and she also is signing?
She, yeah, so, so the way it's set up is both, um, my deputy and myself are both bonded. And what happens is she is included on every, in every trade because she's also a signer. So if I'm not there, she can make the, the investments on my behalf. Um, but basically I make them and she's copied on everything, along with our accounting director as well. So they know all the moves that we're making.
Um, and really, the policy isn't necessarily changing in totality, but these percentages are ultimately changed.
Yeah, it, it makes it a little bit more flexible. I mean, I, I would hate to, to have to manage nine to ten investment accounts. So this just makes it a little bit easier to, to invest.
And it doesn't require that you have up to seventy-five percent, but for example, if fifteen percent of our portfolio put us slightly, for example, underneath a threshold where we could get slightly better interest, you're, the current policy would kind of restrict you from that where this gives you a chance to be a little more flexible.
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, I don't want to be cited. So if, let's, let's say next year I went from, you know, three investment institutions and I only went to five, that fifteen percent, we'd still fail the audit. So, you know, the whole thing is, again, we had Robinson Capital write this, this was a canned um, investment policy that they provided for us. Um, it took us to go through one audit to find where some of the weaknesses were. So identified the weaknesses and I just wanted to make it, you know, make the changes accordingly.
Gotcha. Great. Any other discussion, questions, or is there a motion to amend the investment policy as requested by the Treasurer?
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Old Giotti. Uh, I know we've had some discussion, but is there further discussion? Hearing done and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on our agenda, item G3, also from the Treasurer's Office.
Thanks again. Um, so this is regarding uh a tool that is available actually to a lot of our mortgage lenders. It's called Auto Agent. Uh, this is a tool we found uh through the last uh basic uh training um session that we went through. Many municipalities are using Auto Agent. Basically, this is a free service for the municipality. It's paid for by the mortgage companies who benefit from the service. The product basically interrogates tax bills, balances and payments which are being managed by the mortgage company and banks who pay escrow bills. The product identifies tax overpayments to the municipality. And it also alerts the bank or mortgage company that the payment has been made by another bank or mortgage company or even an owner. Um, so right now, we handle actually um over, I found out today, it's actually over a hundred annually. So what happens when we get an overpayment of taxes, you know, the thing is we need to identify the overpayment. We have to trigger a manual process to back out the, the uh overpayment. Uh, we have to re-journalize that and remove that as well. We have to create a check. So we have to get a check request, a check, transfer request over accounting, mail it out, include um manual explanation letter. So basically what happens for every overpayment, there's a lot of labor in backend that's, that's involved, both in uh actually the Treasurer's Office, Accounting Office, and Clerks because they're a part of that as well. So um, this is no cost to us, um, and uh it will help us eliminate these overpayments.
And then just as a reference point, um, I don't know if you can comment on this. Do you have any reference as to whether or not our, any of our peer communities utilize this service?
Um, s, ye, yes, I don't have, I don't have who they are, but when we were at um the Basic Institute, um, there were, I would say seventy-five percent of the municipalities, when we talked about who used Auto Agent, raised their hand. So when I saw that, I said, I must be missing something here.
It's a common platform.
So I figured, you know, let's, let's, let's look into this. So we looked into it, we did a little background check. I worked with um, Mike Pettigrew from Ann Arbor City of Ann Arbor, who is a uh, a user of this for many years. Uh, we got some guidance from him and then we went forward. Uh, so basically, before I signed the contract, I just wanted to get approval from the Board, um, you know, because I think it will make our lives a lot easier.
Yeah, I shouldn't say that, it's an extra work in the Treasurer's Office. Okay, with that, uh, I'll be looking for a motion, unless there's discussion, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Treasurer to contract with Auto Agent to avoid tax or minimize, I guess, tax overpayments.
Mary, you've coined that mostly that happens on escrow accounts or just on personal?
Yeah.
Personal, people that send their, their own taxes?
Right, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but this is for escrow.
Okay.
So, so what happens is um, like uh, like CoreLogic, CoreLogic is one of our big um agents for escrow that can make us payments. So they, they may have, you know, two hundred or three hundred homes that they, that they send payments in for. So what happens is they send one big check and they send this big list and they say, okay, here's the money for everyone. Well, any, any homes that have been foreclosed, any homes that have been sold, any homes where the prior owner may have paid a bill, the new owner paid a bill. Uh, what happens is um Auto Agent looks at all that data and if anything's duplicated or, or where we get an overpayment, they'll stop it. And then they won't even let them submit the check. So they'll have to correct those files before we get it.
I'll make the motion to approve the Treasurer to contract with Auto Agent to avoid tax overpayments.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Badkins. Uh, we've had some discussion. Is there further discussion or questions on the motion?
I would just uh request that, uh, because it's a new supplier and their agreement's a little bit different than what I'm used to seeing as legal. Has anyone looked at it, Larry?
Um, so I believe, and I supri, I, I, forgive me for not putting it on there, I do have, uh, I did send it to Mr. Huth and I do, he did have a uh,
Okay.
a positive uh go-forward from him and I, I see that I didn't put it in here, so I apologize that I didn't include that.
That's okay. Thank you for following up on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing done and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Uh, next is item H1 uh regarding revenue dispersment policy. Board members, the Township has opted into allowing certain recreational uh me, marijuana businesses and approved certain licensing fees. We expect to receive these fees annually as our ordinance requires annual renewal. The fees are designed to cover the cost of administering the application process, including the reviews of those applications by the Clerks Officer, Treasurer's Office, Building Department, Fire Department, and our Township Planner. The Board adopted a policy defining how revenue from fees related to medical marijuana businesses would be divided amongst our various funds. I'm recommending that the Board adopt a similar policy that divides the fees from recreational marijuana using the same formula. Sixty percent of those fees would go to the general fund, twenty percent would go to the building fund, and twenty percent would go to the fire fund. We can and will evaluate this moving forward and we can modify these shares if necessary. But at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt the revenue dispersment policy for recreational marijuana permit fees as proposed effective immediately.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado. Uh, any discussion?
How much money are we talking about roughly?
You know what, it's like a hundred, uh, like a hundred and fifty thousand?
So it's, so it, it varies, but it's five thousand dollars per license. And as some of the uh businesses have come online, maybe initially they might have said, hey, we're just going to get into the business and we're not up to speed yet, so we're just going to get one five thousand dollar license. As they finish their build outs, they might come back for the renewal and say, well, now we're going to stack licenses, so we need three or four licenses. And some of them might say, we want a medical, a recreational license, and a processing license. So it, it, it does vary.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it was a hundred and forty in the medical side last year. It's, it was two hundred in the, the adult use side.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah. And I would expect that we'll see a decrease in the medical side and probably a hold steady in the recreational side in the upcoming renewals.
But so last year, total fees were three hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
And some of that could shrink, but then there are businesses that have, that are coming online this year that were not functional last year. Uh, so those, that could be an area where those fees could go. Um, okay, uh, any other discussion or questions? Hearing done and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Uh, next on the agenda is regarding the Freedom Trail. Last September, this Board approved up to six thousand dollars to assess the condition of the Freedom Trail and worked with a township engineer to develop a bid package. When the work was approved, some Board members requested an update prior to bidding the work. The rough estimate came in from the, kind of a windshield survey at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. It's a rough estimate to repair all of our bike paths. I recently sent correspondence to the Board suggesting that this work would be a good way to spend the uh ARPA funds or the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I am requesting permission to use the remaining funds approved at the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one Board meeting to prepare bid documents for the rehabilitation of the Freedom Trail and to solicit bids for this work. Uh, ultimately, the bids would come back to the Board for review and selection. If it's the Board's intention to review the bid package pri- If it's the board's intention to review the bid package prior to going out for bid, I'm okay with that as well. I just think it's the next best step is to move forward with getting some prices and getting this work scheduled. So I'll be looking for a motion to authorize the supervisor to work with Wade Trim to develop a bid package for the reconstruction of the Freedom Trail and to solicit bids for the repair work with a recommendation to come back before the board on a later date. And again, if the intention is, we want to review the bid package, whether it's a part of the motion, or whether board members, I know one board member expressed an interest in seeing that bid package prior to going out, it's a, it's up to you.
I'll, I'll make the motion as written with the understanding that I've got an opportunity to pick one up.
Yeah, no, I, and, and I think we, I, okay, I'm sorry, let me jot that down. Uh, motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado. Um, and I think, frankly, we benefit from your experience being the guy who's submitting bids in your other life, uh, to be able to look these over and say, hey, I don't like this, and you should watch that, and so that's, only benefits us, so that's great.
Advantage using the ARPA funds, correct?
Well, at this point, the six thousand dollars is general funds.
Okay.
So we already approved that, because really, last September, I don't think we knew yet that ARPA funds could be used for this. Right, so we just said, hey, let's just get the process going. Um, but my intention, I guess my, I, my point was, is, uh, we're going to, we're going to develop a bid package. And let's just say it comes in at seven hundred and fifty thousand. To me, that's a good use of those funds, to, to take something that, you know, the, when we talk about how to use ARPA funds, we want to use them in a way that benefits everyone. So we had talked about the bike path.
Right.
Is something that's kind of a universal thing. It's not really one neighborhood or another neighborhood. Similarly, we had talked about the potential paying for the second squad, uh, using ARPA funds. Again, really, ambulance really doesn't discriminate, uh, over any one resident over another.
Right.
So at least we'd be potentially spending some of those funds in a way that, that, that's equal.
Yeah, and I think the real check, the real reason this checkpoint existed was we were like, well, if it comes back at three million dollars to do the work, it doesn't make any sense to bid it, you know, giving the number, it, you know, it makes sense to step forward.
Well, I, I, I will have to say that when I talk to people in the community about, you know, projects and things along that line, when the Freedom Trail comes up, and we say we're working on a plan to resurface it and smooth it out, there's general excitement in the community, and everybody, nobody has anything bad to say about that.
Nope.
It's always good, because people enjoy it, and it's a big part of our community, is very, very important.
I agree, I agree.
It brings people in other communities, and stuff like that, in restaurants and things here too, so.
No question about it. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is, uh, regarding a substitute bus driver. Our smart shuttle program has traditionally had backup drivers to serve as substitutes when needed. Uh, we have been searching for a new substitute, and we recommend the approval of Ms. Marie Jaeger. Uh, she would also be able to help out as a weekend shuttle driver as well. So he's making, uh, proposing a motion to approve hiring Ms. Marie Jaeger as a substitute part-time bus driver, and the wage is already pre-established in our policy.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rose, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Badkins. Uh, any discussion on the motion to hire Ms. Jaeger?
So I'm just assuming through all of the hiring processes, a background check done on her and all that stuff?
Not a, we don't do background checks, as a matter of, of practice. We do do pre-employment physicals and drug tests.
And a valid driver's license and all that.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. All right, a- and, and, um, well, I, I, I should maybe note before I speak. Historically, we've had, um, uh, bus drivers that have come from, like, say from Land Cruze as an example, so we've kind of benefited from that. But, you know, this is an at-will position, you know. Sometimes you can have someone that comes with all the best qualifications, but maybe they're just, you know, not dependable, so. This is kind of a, as a backup, it's kind of a chance for us to kind of try someone out on a trial period. Uh, I, I know she came with a recommendation, but I can't remember what it was, uh, Joe handled this, so. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, hearing none and seeing no public comment, we've got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mrs., by Mr. Badkins to, uh, extend an offer of employment to Ms. Jaeger as a part-time bus driver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Um, who's that? Next on our agenda is item H four, uh, regarding a scholar, potential scholarship. Board members, the Michigan Townships Association distributes a yearly scholarship called the Robert R. Robinson Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship helps students who are seeking a career in public service, specifically in government administration. Our deputy supervisor, Joe Aragona, is currently working toward his master's, uh, in business, MBA, master's in business administration through Michigan State University to advance his career in this area. A requirement to apply for the scholarship is a resolution of approval by this board. Um, I believe we've had prior recipients of this scholarship.
The last two deputy supervisors have both received.
Yep, so, uh, so it's, uh, you know, helps out, uh, to see, uh, young folks advancing their careers. And so at this time, I'd be, uh, would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for Joseph Paragona in order to apply for the Robert R. Robinson Scholarship through the MDA.
Support.
A motion by Mr. Tom Inello with support by Mr. Brado. Uh, discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Tom Inello?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Badkins?
Yes.
Mr. Oljati?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Verkast?
Yes, thank you, board. Next on our agenda, item H five. Board members, article twenty-three of the AFSMI contract allows for the reimbursement of certain educational expenses when the township would realize a benefit from the classes or other instruction. Uh, our administrative assistant in the fire department, Ms. Paula Phyllis, recently took and completed the administrative assistant professional courses at McComb Community College. Attached is her certificate, uh, and proof of payment in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. I recommend the reimbursement of these educational expenses in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there discussion or a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll support that motion.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Tom Inello with support by Mr. Oljati. Uh, this doesn't come up very often, but, uh, clearly, when, uh, and not only does this benefit the township and our residents, but it's also, uh, quality of, uh, employment. We, you know, we want to reward folks who are willing to, um, expand their knowledge and, uh, improve in their job on their own time. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Uh, next, we added two items, H six and H seven. Um, first, H six was regarding a potential grant. Um, SEMCOG has a planning grant that's available that can help cover the cost of, um, basically re- redoing our master plan, correct? Right?
Yes, yes.
Um, but it does come with a match. Uh, the maximum, I think the maximum grant is fifty thousand. And if that were the case, uh, the match would be nine thousand and seventy-five dollars. Uh, our planner has suggested that the cost to, to redo our master plan probably would not reach fifty thousand, so our match would be less. But the most the match could be would be nine thousand seventy-five dollars. Um, but clearly, it's a grant, and we do, I think our master plan is over ten years old.
It, it's due and we're ready to get started.
Make a motion to approve matching funds for the planning grant through SEMCOG at a cost not to exceed nine thousand seventy-five dollars.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Tom Inello. Um, and this is really just authorizing that we can apply for the grant. Um, if we get the grant, great. If not, we'll be talking about redoing the master plan anyway, so it's, uh,
And four.
And four, well, yeah, right, without a grant, I suppose, unless there's some other grant available. Um, so this would just help us with that cost. Any discussion?
Just a question, are, is there, uh, is, is, is there a law through the state of Michigan, or, or the government, where the master plan has to be updated every so many years, and what amount of time is that?
I don't.
I believe it's supposed to be reviewed every ten years, like, that's the standard.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's a law, but I think it's a practice.
Practice, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a fair thing.
Ours, ours is coming up on twelve, eleven or twelve, I think. So we're over.
Okay, all right. So time to do it, no matter what. Uh, I think the reality is, this is, this was on the horizon regardless, but this grant opportunity did make it, uh, all the more attractive, and I can't help but, uh, mention that we have a resident, um, who not only serves on her planning commission, but her DDA. She's a county planner, uh, Mrs. Amanda Alparca, who's helping us with this, and it, and it's really great to be able to have residents who step up and help apply for grants, and so we're very, very fortunate to have her. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Uh, the next item, our, uh, or last item other than public comment is item H seven regarding three-nine-nine-nine-zero West Offshore. Board members, um, you may recall, let's see, I think I had a little write-up on this. Did I pick that out? Maybe I did not. Um, shoot, I have some notes, well, I can tell you in just a minute. Um, we did purchase a vacant lot as part of the tax foreclosure process back in twenty-twenty. This vacant lot is in Brigantine, Brigantine Estates, uh, specifically three-nine-nine-nine-zero West Offshore. It is the first lot on the left as you enter from the west entrance. This board, uh, approved hiring Mr. Len Gallo, uh, to help, uh, give us an idea on what to, what to sell it for, as well as listing the lot and assisting us through the sale. Uh, that was a flat fee of five hundred and ninety-five dollars. We originally listed the lot at a higher price, and the initial listing was fifty-nine-nine. And there was some discussion about other comparable lots, and maybe not necessarily going in and lowballing this lot to, um, you know, have an adverse effect on some other lot owner. Um, after it was listed for about a year, uh, we received the recommendation to lower the asking price to forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars last June. Uh, to date, we have not received any offers until just last week. Uh, we did receive a cash offer for the lot for forty thousand dollars. Um, and I've got paperwork that supports that offer, and the real estate agent has looked it over. Considering that we've owned it for two years, and there are holding costs associated with this, because it is in a condo association, um, my recommendation would be to ultimately to accept that offer and authorize the supervisor to execute the sale with the assistance of, whether it be the attorney, the real estate professional, or both.
Sorry, I was busy looking up the address. Did you say why it hasn't been purchased? Like, what, what are your thoughts on that?
So, uh, the short answer, I, I, I'm, I'll say, my strength is definitely not in real estate. Um, uh, I mean, we've owned it since, we've owned it for roughly two years. So one might argue it's the price. However, within Brigantine Estates, when we look at those lots, it, that's certainly a nice neighborhood, and there's some nice homes there. This particular one is r- the very, is right on the edge of the property, as close as you could be to North River Road and as close as you could be to South Ridge. So it, I think it's still a nice lot, but, you know, I could go to the back of that development and I could be on a canal, or on, on the Clinton River. Uh, there's some corner lots, there are different lots, there's some lots that back up to vacant land, so. This one isn't necessarily the prime lot. If this were located on the river, I think it would fetch a much higher price. Um, but I do feel like keeping it on the market for two years, I can't say that, you know, if we get an offer for forty grand cash, I mean, that,
Yeah.
you know, it seems like
Yeah.
we haven't had any other offers, so I do think it's a reasonable offer, and, and again, and I know Mr. Huth spoke to this, that we have a, you know, that we have that fiduciary responsibility, so we're employing a real estate professional to give us that advice. It is the advice of the real estate agent that we accept the offer.
Make a motion to approve the sale of three-nine-nine-nine-zero West Offshore at a cost of forty thousand dollars and authorize supervisor to work with the attorney to complete the sale.
And real estate agent, because I'm not real estate. Okay, good. All right, motion by Mr. Witt, is there support?
I'll support that.
All right, support by Mrs. Rose. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Why don't you go through the legwork, you'll, you'll come back to the board with a net, what was the actual, where we ended up on it?
I can, I, I have not historically, I mean, but it, but I know that the, well, I have record.
We're, we're not realtors by, I mean, that's not what we do. I know we got lucky on a couple other properties, either, just for carriers.
Little over six grand that we spent in back taxes, and we've had holding costs for roughly two years. I don't know what the, what those association fees are, uh, but certainly, let, let me say this.
Between grass and association fees, if we had another two grand, I'd be surprised.
Correct, yeah, we're, yeah, uh, to say, to say that we have less than, I'm comfortable saying we have way less than ten grand invested in this. We did have quiet title, I believe, at some point in the process.
A couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, some of these steps.
I'm good with that information.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it is, but, a- a- and it's important to note that there was a Supreme Court decision. We recently just had a discussion at the treasurer's breakfast about this. And, and, you know, there, the, there can be, um, recouping of some of those costs based on in, people who have an interest in the party, uh, interest in parties that have an interest in the property. But regardless, we can't lose money. So let's just say we, let's say we net forty thou- let's say we gross forty thousand and we spent ten thousand to acquire and maintain the lot, the worst that somebody could do is come back and say, I want the other thirty grand. This goes back to a Supreme Court case where somebody paid their taxes, they missed, like, by eight dollars or something, fell short.
It was a late fee.
Yeah, some sort of late fee, and it ended up, you know, it was, it, you know, it was horrible, so.
Okay.
Um, but this, this parcel was, this parcel reached this phase of being foreclosed, tax foreclosed, because the owner of the parcel, I believe, had some sort of a judgment against them, and it was applied to this parcel, but that judgment is erased through the tax foreclosure process. So the, for them, it wasn't worth it, because in order for them to sell the lot, they had a big lien against there from a, from a judgment, so. What that eventual outcome might look like is a whole separate subject, but it's ours, and we have no business holding it, and it's.
We're not cutting lawn anymore.
Right, I don't want to cut any more grass or pay any more dues. And the result is, is that presumably someone will purchase it, build a home, and, you know, one more taxpayer in resident Harrison Township.
How many empty lots are in there right now?
I don't think there are many.
They're not, I think we were like, one of the last ones, and that's probably why it finally got to buying those ones.
When this was, when we listed this, now, when we say vacant lots, you know, if I own a vacant lot adjacent to my home, that's a little bit different, it might be an investment. But in terms of people who might be holding, one of the things was, again, that the real estate agent said was, you know, we could go in and just say, hey, let's list it for thirty and just dump it.
Right.
But what that does is now maybe, you know, Mr. Smith owns a lot around the corner, and he's saying, well, wait a minute, now you've just devalued my lot, so. If we've listed it, we started at almost sixty, we dropped it to a little less than fifty, we've listed it for two years, at this point, we, we can't really be accused of hurting someone else's investment.
And that's why I asked how many empty lots are there, you know, I want somebody knocking on your door next week when it's like, it is a little elusive on a money, you know, and what the heck are you guys doing over there?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's, yeah.
Whatever it is.
Yep, yep. So, all right, any other discussion? Hearing, uh, hearing none and seeing no public comment, we've got a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mrs. Rose. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is item I, uh, public comments. They can be about any subject that you wish, but we ask that you try to limit them to five minutes and later.
Uh, board members, residents, C. William Barrell, twenty-five-year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door. Clean up, fix up, people help and people. Just, uh, want to tell everyone, uh, have a wonderful Memorial Day. And also, uh, take a look at, uh, Save Lake St. Clair on Facebook and follow, stay up to date on what's going on. And, uh, um, uh, like I said, be safe this Memorial Day, and, uh, pace yourself. And, uh, everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we'll close the floor for public comment, and we'll, board comments. Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, support.
Got a motion by Mr. Brado with support by Mr. Brad, Badkins, any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, board.